What?
There is, and this is not even half, I don't think. My phone is probably another this plus. Yeah, so, and this is just the spring update and the fall update's coming, so.
Oh, that's right, you're still in spring. Yeah, this is still spring.
Okay.
Um. Uh. Okay, well, I guess we'll just start at the top. I was gonna say maybe we should. Yeah, but we're sending ones back to people. I have a feeling we'll go for it.
Some of them are, so like this first one is very, very minor. What they did to the policy was they added a requirement that, um. Well, hold on. So, school safety, this is similar to the one that we just did with the change in definition of school property. But this is the school safety one. So it's the same sort of wording about school property and supervision is required and those kinds of things, but this one is in regards to school safety. So this is, um, pretty simple. The addition was to number two. Procedures that address the safety and supervision of students on school property, and then this is what was added as defined in RSA one ninety-three D and F during school hours. And then this was also added and during school sponsored activities, whether or not on school property. And then it goes back to J L I A, which was the one that we just approved. So this is the other piece of that. In the perspective of school safety. Good minor.
I don't see any issue with that.
Parallels the language that we put into the other one?
Yes. Can you make that in?
Yeah. Think straightforward second, yeah. It's good.
Good. Okay.
I know, see, there we go.
This one will also be.
We need to do two readings, I guess, is the question.
Well, that's up to you.
I think we should do, let's just.
They were told to just to be safe. Yeah, I think you're right. Okay.
The next one, we just got through last year, but then back in Concord, they realized, oh, we should do this every year. We should have an audit. So they added a requirement for an annual audit as number eleven to the policy. Our policy only goes up to ten. They added a number eleven, a requirement for an annual hygiene plan audit and report. That's just the one line. On a number eleven of the sample policy, they added the number eleven, which needs to be added to our policy.
Right, and, um, that's the requirement. So I guess we have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we have to, like, we, I was gonna ask if that's feasible then for us to do, but.
And it's already in our plan. We provided the plan for, um, just for information purposes to you, but it's already in our plan on page twelve. So we don't have to change the plan. So it's already in there. It was going to happen anyway, but now by law, we have to have it in the policy, so we would just add it.
No change in this.
Nope, it's already on page twelve that there's an annual audit.
Okay.
It's in the plan, but it's not in our policy.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So I didn't ask this with the last one, but, um, in this case, we're gonna keep our policy as it is, but just add that one line.
Yep.
To look, right?
Yep.
And then from the school safety one, they may just keep our policy and update that one language.
Yep.
I can hear the hard for words. It's okay for not changing. As many changes in the policy. Or the. Okay. So can read through that one, Jean? If this is otherwise. That makes sense.
And. Here we go into the three oh sixes. Any of the I policies, we're gonna have a lot of I policies over the next few months, and these are all related to the three oh six rules, which are the, um, minimum standards for public school approval. And a lot of these changes that are being made, either update language or today's policies that we're looking at, there are some policies that were rescinded because language has been incorporated into existing or new policies. This is one of the policies that we currently have on the books. But there have been substantial change to it, um, regarding what happens with ELOs. Um, making them mandatory for high schools, which we already offer anyway. And the ways that people are sort of overseeing these have been changed.
Um, what I understood, I was starting about the adding ELOs for younger students. Do we already do that?
We do not.
Okay. So it says, if, only if we do.
Right.
Yeah. Right. Does it make sense to keep that information in the policy though, in case they watch you?
I don't think it would hurt. And because they're in the minimum standards for school approval, I think adding it there, if we ever decide to make that change, it would be easier to do in the school.
Mm-hmm.
And then there are a bunch of areas in the sample policy that are highlighted yellow where we actually have to put in either building names or designate things.
Oh, definitely. Wait, we did already have this policy, but it was not.
It's, it's been completely reworded, updated. They've included a very robust purpose. There's a lot, there's been a lot of changes that have been added.
And I mean, gee, because I just saw those in the.
Wait, no, I H B H.
I H B.
Oh, I, I, this one says I H B I. Wow, that was, okay. It looks so simple. Okay.
I wasn't aware when I said it.
So, did we not have a, oh, no, it's just ready. Okay. Very. So this one's called alternative learning programs.
Nope, this one's extended learning opportunities. I H.
Okay, you just don't have our current. No, okay, so we never.
It might be stuck to the back of your.
Okay.
Chemical plan.
There we go. It was, it's, okay. So, um. Um. I guess I was just thinking, which I don't think, but it has, okay. So you're saying that you think it might be worth taking the new, are you, are you thinking we should just consider adopting the whole sample policy in place of our own?
I think it makes sense because there is so much that has changed. I mean, if you just go side by side with ours and then the page where it starts with theirs, we don't have a purpose. We don't have roles and responsibilities. We don't have an application process in ours. Um, we don't have an appeal, uh, evaluation criteria, like there's, there's a lot of components that are missing that are now required, that trying to go in and retrofit to what was, and this initial policy dates back to probably two thousand and five, since there were changes, even though the school board has gone through and updated. There hasn't been substantial adjustment to three oh six rules since then. And you wanna be in compliance with those because those are the minimum standards to approve our schools and students are getting credits for their ELOs. And we wanna make sure that they can continue to do that.
Wifi or evil.
Mine doesn't seem to play very well. I didn't even try second time, but I don't know if I am. City Hall couldn't.
Well, it seems like it's.
Yeah, it's not happy.
No.
Sometimes I've been in the past, I've been able to get on the PSD, yes, wireless, but kids. It's not, it's not free at all, but.
Bro, it just ticked up on my band. I don't know.
I'm very fairly grateful for the lunch house.
Yes.
I hate to say trees, but I also like side by side comparisons on paper. I'm not seeing anything stands out to me in terms of not wanting to show her. I mean, it is a lot more expensive to rent.
Um, can we speak to any material changes, Patty, and what's the difference between that? Yeah.
Or come on, and this one, it's, it's all of these upgrades to who's going to be in charge of what, the roles and responsibilities, the fact that there's going to be a specific application process for students to apply for ELOs, that's codified. We have a process that we're using, but this puts into writing what's going on. Um, the only change that I would probably recommend would be under evaluation criteria for applications. We do have an ELO coordinator who's currently doubling as our influence C P E director. I think if we change that to principal or designee to evaluate applications, um, because I think the ELO coordinator is going to have more conversations with students, be more aware of their interests and be able to do the matchmakings for what those opportunities might be in a smoother way. And then what that also.
I'm sorry, you're saying instead of the ELO coordinator?
No, on evaluation criteria.
Yeah.
I would add principal or designee. Because what that also does is if the student has to appeal, they're appealing to the principal, who is not necessarily the one who's made the decision for the application.
Yeah.
You wanna have another layer in there, somebody who's making decisions about, okay, you applied to do this thing or this thing, we put you into your second choice because there was a ruling of first choice.
That's what I need to make that to me, I think.
I agree. So you're saying that we, we don't currently, or do we have an application process of some sort?
There's a process of some sort, but this puts it into a little bit more. And, and what this does too is this allows it to be more transparent, so folks understand, well, geez, how do I do an ELO? Well, this is what you do. Oh, who do I go see? Well, there's an ELO coordinator. This, this I think explains more about what those extended learning opportunities are, and part of what the three oh six upgrades were to do is to provide multiple means for students to demonstrate their learning. And the ELOs are a very powerful way for students to do that. That's not tied to seat time.
Yeah. I guess my, my only concern would be making it more complicated for the student or, or harder to achieve. But, like, you know, sometimes we try to keep these processes out of the policies and have them as procedures instead. But I agree, I mean, I like, I like that it's easier to find in a policy and but funny, so I can relate around.
Because the three oh six rule talks about, um, incorporating student participation and selecting, organizing, carrying out ELOs, being available to all students, so that's called out. So that by having an application process that's public, every student is aware and every student able to apply, even if they hadn't done one in the past, aren't in certain classes where people are talking about it.
Let me fire it.
Yeah.
Go forward to. Question.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, we'll make that change of the what does he, the criteria. And so.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we're onto alternative.
Yes.
There was a lot of language in here about being, that's being updated more specifically for students with IDPs. But does that mean it still applies to students?
It will apply to students with IDPs as well as students who might have other alternative learning, uh, plans.
Okay.
Um, so in the three oh sixes, it talks about alternative programs or alternative learning plans are designed to address the personalized and differentiated needs of students. So we've run into situations at the high school where we might have a student who's not on the IEP, but there might be a case where we might need to accelerate their program because families moving out of state, they wanna graduate out of Portsmouth. And so being able to design something where they can demonstrate their learning would be open to them as well, even though they don't have an IEP. A different way to demonstrate, again, this is all back, it's the same sort of refrain you're gonna hear over and over, different ways to demonstrate learning that are not tied to seat time, not tied to, you know, number of tests you've taken, things like that. It's being able to demonstrate competency in those areas. Um, and so what this did, the revision took what used to be sort of a very, um, I don't know, kind of a singular process and brought this so that more students would be able to access individual learning plans. That they're, they include ELOs, they include performing groups, they include possibly community service, apprenticeships, other opportunities. So you might have students who aren't good in a classroom. They want to show that they've learned something in a different way.
Okay, so that's, that's good. I, I couldn't tell if it was the opposite, sort of saying, like, it no longer applied to students without IDPs, but.
It's them and, oh, so it, so instead of stigmatizing a student on IEP because they're on an alternate plan, the alternate plans now are opened up more to all kinds of students.
Is this the one that talks about? Um. It is, um, learn everywhere or something?
Learn everywhere sprinkled through a lot of these.
Okay.
Um, I think that learn everywhere probably is part of this because the former commissioner, that was his push to try to get students to take different ways to show that you've achieved competencies.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I mean, generally in favor, but I worry a little bit about what that does to public education.
Yep.
Um, but I'm not seeing that, must have been another one where it was.
They, they sprinkled through a lot of these with the three oh sixes because it was sort of the whole, the idea was.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, here, remember you say that the alternative plans and programs rather than you say, but what you put the difference between is between alternative program versus separate continuing program?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I think that they're called out in the three oh sixes separately. I think that some of this is IEP related, where they need to complete a certain program. Um.
My interpretation was that they were sort of opposites, like that there's an alternative program or there's the regular continuing program, which is just like your standard.
So continuing program refers to just like sort of name, main street.
It might, but it also might include things where you've got students who would be, not necessarily for us, but I could see like in some other districts where we were sending students out for, um, like CTE, and if they were going to a program. Right. They were going to a program to be an EMT, and that was a separate program that they were going through as, as a scandal. But that wasn't able to be considered an alternative program under the old rules.
Okay.
So now this, this would cover if you're going to a separate program to learn how to be an EMT, if you're taking night school, um, for something, if you're with V-Lax and V-Lax, you're doing some sort of something through V-Lax. What it's, what, what all of these rules are doing is opening up the ways that students can show learning
Okay.
at the high school level.
I mean, this is sort of hopefully silly question, but, um, are we equipped to, like, process all of this? Like, it seems like it, it very much complicates a student's path. I mean, not a student's path, but sort of the, the reporting of path.
The school counselors have got a lot of stuff going on in this, and I think that they've been trying to keep up with stuff that's going on now anyway. Um, they're already processing a lot of these things, either straight through school counseling or through IEPs. Um, different plans, which is why one of the, one of the things we wanted last year was a director of counseling to sort of help with organizing some of the work that was happening.
So the director of counseling, you say, one of the potential benefits to that is coordination of
All of these.
Alternate programs.
Okay. Standardizing, organizing a form, organizing a process, going into a certain file cabinet to find all those kinds of things that are the administrative piece of it, so that if I know that Pip is working with a student who's doing something, oh, here's the form, I can email you the form and you just fill that out instead of like, where was this and who had Molly last year? Because I think it, there, there's just a lot of that happening, where I think streamlining some of that would be helpful. So can we process it? We're doing a lot of it now. Is it a perfect system? No. Um, do these put more burden, these, these new three oh six rules put more burdens on schools in certain ways? Yeah, they do. Um, because they're opening up so many possibilities, instead of everybody sort of doing the same thing, you've got a lot of variety now, which is great for the student, but it's tricky to keep track of.
Yeah, this was. But I do agree, it's. Um, okay. So in this case, we're, we're considering taking, just switching over to the sample policy?
I think it would make sense because again, here's another one where we've got components that didn't exist in the other one. There's a lot more of, um, descriptions in there that talk about how this works, who's doing it. Um, there is an area that we have to decide on in section A, where we could either put a dollar amount in there or we could say, um, I'm not even sure what that, what the number is. Remember, Violet?
Well, I was gonna say, this came up before.
Yeah.
I think the decision was, if you look at, um, if you look at line twelve of your existing policy, is it there? Um, basically, it was kind of, I don't, it, it was hard to commit to a number.
Yeah.
Not knowing what, and I think the decision was just kind of in conjunction with board policies. That it got, if you look at the sample, they basically, the, the last committee decision was that delete that last sentence. It ended with conjunction with board policies.
I don't know if the dollar amount makes sense.
I mean, it could be so very, it's hard to say.
Yeah, well, it's also sort of like, um, seems like it's more like if it would affect like line items at other places where required, you know, um, and adjustment to priorities as set forth, right? Um, would be like the tipping point, which point the board would have to get involved. So, yeah, the dollar amount is, seems like it would change, yeah. Yeah.
Well, what if it went pretty like that? I think that's not really good. A good, um, I mean, I guess that's a little bit, that's our implication as well, but.
Yeah.
But I like the idea of approval beyond a certain, you know, if it is an impact other things and having a choice between that and something else. But then again, would the board be making that decision or not?
Uh, well, it's it would be.
Mackenzie won.
It's interesting one, I think, because it sort of comes into ultimately if it was if it was such a program that was outside of the priority set and like the actual budget that was kind of, right? And there were sort of additional expenditures needed to add to the overall budget, that would be an additional expenditure to the council, is what, right? So if it was like, right, there's two levels to it, right? There's sort of like, are you moving things around based on the existing pie that you have? Is that something that the board needs to get involved with? Two, if it's additive, then it would be an additional request to the council, and that probably does have to go through the board, I would think. So, um.
So could we just say especially expenditures beyond the annual budgeted?
Yeah.
Certain months or, I mean, annual budget or outside of the annual budget. The per annual budget.
So we could say beyond, yeah, beyond what is in, beyond what is within what is approved in the current year's budget.
Beyond what is approved in the current year's budget?
Yeah.
That, to me, that sounds like what is approved for this. And is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this already has like line item, I'm sure it does.
So that means if it is going to shift other things.
Right.
It doesn't mean if it's gonna add to the budget.
It could mean both of those. Yeah. Yeah. Which, which, yeah, yeah.
As long as you want.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you say that one more time?
Say that again.
Beyond what is approved in the current year's budget.
Would it be enough just to say beyond what is budgeted?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Don't they have that here? And I'm updating the title too, right, for us to reflect?
Yes, yeah.
What is it, Chris?
It's just alternative learning plans, it's gonna change to alternative learning programs and individual plans. Because three oh sixes call it alternative programs, not plans.
Activities, because it's a small little policy.
Yes, sixteen. And of course, there's a new rule, new rules. So, three oh six oh four B, what is this? I, I H C A. Basically talks about how students can include summer activities. That's what the rule talks about.
I think the current policy is just like we, we encourage you to do things in the summer. Okay.
Please do things in the summer, Stephen Paul.
Yeah, it's funny, it doesn't specify that anyone should provide a summer reading or anything.
This paragraph shouldn't be included unless the district has a middle school. Yeah, one of them.
It would be nice to know if any of the touch which, how the district. Find its sources, which I think.
Well, it's a little bit with this last.
Yeah, right.
So list off the activities?
Whether or not they're organized by the district.
Well, we don't currently have. Anything that we could list. And some of the, so they talk about like E L Os and different things about competencies to our high school students sometimes are in E L O. That. They're working at it over the summer.
Mm-hmm.
And they're still doing whatever because. It's a career that they choose to go into, so they continue to work. So what this is saying is, pursuant to the new rule. The district supports that this is happening. Um, but.
So.
So we should strike this last thing in front of the list anything?
The optional part, yeah, that.
Yeah.
Which, oh, that very.
Paragraph, it says optional and we don't, we don't have anything to.
We have nothing to listen.
Well, I mean, don't we have some? Is this separate from like the, the outdoor, like high road source or whatever that? That is, why is that different?
Cause it's a. That's more like an enrichment thing where this is more of a, it's more academic.
Well, do we not have a summer school?
Not technically.
Not technically.
No.
Not technically, so there is summer, they've been changing it in the last two years at the high school. To make it more summer school like, where you're doing actual credit recovery.
So you can't actually like, cause I could, like I got an algebra two credit or whatever it was, yeah, that's not a thing you can do.
Unless you do V LAX, where this would be another thing where that would support, so if you're a student who wants to accelerate.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna take algebra two during the year, I need to do it over the summer because I'm planning to do X Y Z in the next semester. You could do it over the summer with V LAX.
Okay.
But.
So should we, I mean, should we include something like that, like V LAX or E L Os? Cause it doesn't even, ours doesn't even speak to E L Os.
Students wishing to avail themselves to the opportunity to achieve competencies in non-district summer activities. So that's, that's where that would fall.
Just, okay, so we don't need to list.
No, necessarily.
So, um, might send to summer school and middle school. But you're saying we're not doing that anymore?
Well, summer school is different from extended school year.
Okay.
So that it, there was a difference.
Yeah, so summer school is more like a regular school day kind of experience or?
Could be, um, what they're sort of moving toward at the high school is more of a credit recovery. If you're not doing well and you wanna spend X amount of weeks trying to regain your credit for algebra one, that could happen. There were students who do E L Os over the summer, there are students who will do V LAX over the summer because I'm gonna take French four.
So if your direction is, is uh, acceleration. You're more looking at like a V LAX as like.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, because a lot of the work that they've done in the last year, year and a half.
And that isn't offered by the district.
No. Relax is a separate program.
So.
So that's why we're not listed.
Right, and what we've been doing though is some credit recovery things. Where if you know you've got a large group of students who need to get through English ten. There might be work for that.
I just wonder if we should, those should be listed, those, all those options that were mentioned should be listed somewhere, just so people know what they are. Because it seems like. It seems very vague.
But they change from year to year and this is very high school kind of, there's a high school slant to it. Especially in that second paragraph. Cause the first paragraph is what we had, and it's kind of like, go read a book, go, you know, go, go to the museum. But the second paragraph that we're adding is very much toward competencies, high school credit. And either moving ahead. Finding a way to regain that whatever.
It does call it up and say, paragraph. Students wishing to avail themselves, spike the name, to avail themselves, um. Of the opportunity to achieve competencies in non-district summer activities should consult the school counselor to maximize the alignment. So it's sort of like, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna accelerate, yeah.
And though there are ongoing conversations with that, but because. It changes, you don't know from year to year, are we going to need to do summer school English test? Are we going to, like, you don't know what the need is going to be and, or how many students, or even for that matter, what V LAX is gonna offer all bit of summer.
Okay, so talking to the counselor is the.
That's a nice adversity what we have now, which is like.
Yeah, go read a book. I also wonder, I mean, it says like, the board encourages students to have a plan for summer activities, but that's sort of. To me, that's not much of a policy, it's like, should we help them make a plan? Is, should we designate someone to? I don't know, it's just kind of a weird instruction to give to students through a policy that's very vague and not.
Summer is not our time either, as like schools, so I think.
Well, that's why I think it's weird that we even say that, you know, like.
Yeah.
But. I don't know. It feels a little bit elitist too, in some ways, because it's like. Kids can't just decide what they're gonna do with their summer and, you know. But, I'm all right with it, I think it's, it's vague enough, but.
So yeah, I'm gonna just going with the reading and just getting rid of that last paragraph.
So this one, when it comes to edited, will look a little bit different because our first paragraph. Is almost identical to the New Hampshire scoreboard sample. There's only one added provision, which is that and and other career readiness. So I'm gonna just make that tweak in our existing and then just add the second paragraph. And then update the list, so I'm not striking the whole thing.
Go ahead, thank you.
Yeah. But we'll still do the earnings.
Yeah.
But I appreciate the.
Well, really what this talks to is to make sure you have a plan for reviewing your resources, which honestly, right now, this strategic plan and. That whole focus area one that we're doing is doing this. But there are also needs to be, at the end of this, um, and at the very end of the policy, there, it talks about. A legitimate plan.
Mm-hmm.
That goes to the board that says, here's our, what we call it in circles, is like the curriculum review cycle. When are you reviewing the math? When are you reviewing the science? Like, and there's like a rotation.
Yeah.
And so what they talk about here in the end note. Is that, um, the first plan should be due in twenty twenty seven, which aligns perfectly with the strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, that would be a decision that. You both would need to make, um, and it's like every third year, you're looking at the plan, which. Curriculum review cycles generally go on a three to five year rotation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, publishers tend to push folks toward a five year replacement.
Mm-hmm.
Three years is kind of tough because you've just purchased material, you've just. Re, sort of re-updated, um, resources for folks.
Mm-hmm.
But it's usually on a five year, but every three years, if you're looking at the plan to make sure, okay, did we do what we said we were gonna do in the last two years? Do we know what we're doing in the next two years?
Right.
And all of this language directly comes from three oh six, so talks about.
So.
Accessing information efficiently, evaluating, like, this is directly lifted out of the rule.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And in. Kind of phrase through the, uh, the numbers one, two. Three up above. Being able to provide developmentally appropriate, developmentally appropriate resources. To all learning and grade levels, online and print materials, equipment, technologies. Um, resources that are organized and accessible. Managed through a cer- through circulation policies and procedures to maximize use of the resources. You just started reading to that last number being twenty twenty seven, that's the. That's what they're suggesting and I, I think that makes sense because that gives folks a chance to sort of start thinking about. What, what would our plan look like?
Do you think that we need that much time to get, to get it maintained?
Thinking about what we've actually got going on this year in the, in the strategic plan area, folks area one.
Like this is a compromise.
And who's working on that mostly, virtually? And what I think I can actually get done by June of twenty six, twenty seven would be better.
Okay, I think that's reasonable, especially because we know you're already working on it and.
And this would just be the plan for replacing, this wouldn't even be, be extensive what we're working on now, but. If we get through what we've got planned this year, a plan will come more easily.
Um, the only thing I noticed relates to some of the other policies we've been looking at is in the, um. These sections are. Definitely like, definitely one of the sections, which is interesting, but I guess they're all.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, after the major paragraph, um. Um, after number eight.
Mm-hmm.
The second paragraph. Says, you should, schools instructional resources should be organized and accessible to students, staff and parents and managed to, so. I noticed that we added parents in there. And, okay, I figured it was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know we have other policies that allow parents to access them anyway.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, and, and I guess it's, it doesn't specify a lot about that, so. I just wanna make sure that's gonna work with our procedures and. For our teachers, et cetera. But.
A lot of resources are now, if you think about global classroom and things are put online and. That's again, one of the areas we're working on this year with focus area one is try to get some outward facing documents that at least talk about. What are the topics that are being covered in each grade level, not necessarily resources, but at least. You have a reference to, oh, fractions come up in this, this grade, grade level, or this is when they're, they're talking about World War One.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that would also be considered to be that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay.
Here comes I K, which is, this is, this has turned into a monster policy. And by monster, I mean like huge, if you look at like ours was just thirty lines-ish. And it's just, it's going on, we've got sections and we've got multiple pages and. Because what's ended up happening with I K is a lot of the rescinded policies that are listed below. Are folded into it, either in whole or in part.
Yeah.
So they took I K and made it kind of a kitchen sink.
Mm-hmm.
Um, throwing in a lot of different pieces. I K A A, I L B A A, I N B C have been all put into I K.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's huge, it's huge.
You feel like it does, um, word everywhere is in this one.
Oh, that's what.
Section C, number two F.
Yeah.
Do you feel like it does a sufficient job of covering all the other material?
And we're in the other policies, yeah, I think, I think it's pulled in what was in those other policies, but it's also. Really gone into great detail about what competencies are, how credits could be awarded.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a lot of good definitions in here about what that looks like.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's, it's a huge policy, I'm glad that they've separated it into sections. Because. You're looking at like, okay, like, high school credit, what are we doing? And there's just all of this stuff, but you think about interdisciplinary, well. That's through competencies because you might have to. Explain your understanding of conflict between nations, but you could be doing that in social studies class, but also. In an English class.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, there's an interdisciplinary connection there, early graduation. Um, is put in here and talks about how by competencies, instead of seat time. You might be done in January instead of having a waiting field. Um, alternate credit options, this is the, beyond the word everywhere, there's also, um. How you might. Include different credits through. Transfer through E L Os. Seventh and eighth grade coursework, which meets the standards of board policy, so that, good example of that would be algebra one. Students in eighth grade who might be taking algebra one.
Okay, um, we've simply. This is all consistent with the way you gave this anyway, or is it more? Is it more specifically defined?
This does a better job of defining, uh, competencies, and so we have some work to do this year on. Putting some competencies together because starting with. Next year's ninth graders, they're gonna have to be, um, expressly assessed using competencies instead of, um. Seat time, so if they've achieved a competency early, it doesn't matter if. January or June. They've shown that they can demonstrate that competency, but it also does a nice job of putting everything that's high school related into one policy.
You said, so what you're saying around seat time and competency is that if they had to. Demonstrate competency in a specific area.
Mm-hmm.
That they don't have to go, sit down anymore, they don't have to be in the class.
Right.
Yeah. And that's not currently the.
No, and it's.
You take a class, you take a class.
Yeah.
Expectation is that you're there.
Yeah.
Right, um, in addition to showing, yeah. So it's as simple as like, if I, you know, whatever it is. Algebra three, four, right, if I could just like sit down and take the exams and like show competency.
Put tests out.
Put tests out.
That, because that, there is a provision for that in this policy in. Oh. B. Credits or arrangements, students demonstrate achievement and competencies for the course. Showing not awarded on class time, age or enrollment status, demonstration is shown by collection of evidence or portfolio assessments. Which could be district approved or New Hampshire Department of Ed approved. So you could put together a portfolio to demonstrate. I've achieved this competency, I, I can do persuasive writing.
Mm-hmm.
Which all of that would need to be looked at and assessed. It's not just, here I've done it, I, I got the portfolio, I'm done, but you could theoretically test out with this, which that's going to change. The way we operate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, a lot of work administratively, it seems like.
It's very hard to put into practice.
I mean, personally, I love that.
Yeah. And also, what it does is it helps the students who. If you already know this thing and this thing, but you're struggling with this third thing. We're not spending time with you with these first two things. You're solid here, let's spend the time that we have, the time in class. To go over this so that you feel comfortable with this third concept. Instead of, well, we're spending a third of the time on this one, a third of it. That's not helping the student learn, I already know these other two things, why do I need to spend time on this?
How much like? Yeah, I expect there to be an increased overhead in terms of the teachers evaluating if they're now. If they're assessing independent students' attempts to show competency. As opposed to like have a schedule, like as opposed to like a natural cadence of the class.
Well, I don't know if that is necessarily what it's gonna mean, like.
Not every student is gonna take that opportunity, but I could see students who transfer in. I already did this, I don't need to do these things, well, okay, but because you're not on our system. We don't have proof that you know how to do this, so show me what you've done.
Do you feel like?
Yeah, but I I don't think it's gonna happen like in the middle of the year, I mean, in the middle of the semester or something, I mean, I would hope not, but maybe. Like, I don't see each individual student trying to demonstrate a competency at a different time.
I think most of the students, right, are probably just gonna take class. But I suspect there'll be some take advantage or try to take advantage. To move on. And so, I guess, do you feel like we're prepared in all of the different? I'm sure it's different for every subject and genre of curriculum, right, just like, do you feel like we're? What to do those organic assessments?
We are going to be working on the competencies this year. Because this. Isn't where it needs to be, um, I think. Prior to the current high school administration, I think it was, there were attempts made trying to bring this in. Because it existed my previous district, we had all of this in place, we were doing all these things. I think prior to the current high school administration, there were attempts to bring this in, but. There was uncertainty about how to do it, uh terminology needed to be. More clearly explained, I don't think there was a lot of that that was done.
The nonsense is in three oh six, so like, you have to.
Have to do it, yeah.
Yes.
So if there there is no. There's no um. Oh, getting out of it now.
Yes, it'd be super interesting. Yeah, and I've had to get, you know, I've had this with parents and like, I'm frustrated with not being able to move forward. Right, if my student can do this thing, I need to be able to move them forward.
I mean, yeah, I mean nationally, the move is toward competency. Nationally, there there are multiple states that are doing that, and you know, just because you're you've done, let's say there are six competencies in a. Semester long course, if you've got four of them, spend the time on the other two. So that the time you're using in class is worth your while.
I mean, yeah. I don't know how that works in practice in terms of students in different places, I'm sure that, you know, the instruction world has.
Well, this is where getting away from these sort of like kids enrolled, teacher at the front, the Charlie Brown, wah wah wah, everybody's following along. Students are a lot more working on independent projects, teachers are checking in, they might have, you know. An initial thing at the beginning of the class where everybody sort of recalibrates and then you're off and doing your own thing, so. It's it's a lot different from when we were all in school.
Is that fair, so how are the um teachers responding to this direction?
They are not even aware that we're moving in this direction this year, because um, yeah. These all just sort of came out and we have deadlines that are coming for beginning of next school year. So those conversations still haven't been had necessarily. But the competency discussions have been in the state for a long time. We had at one point in the state until they were billed um competency um. Assessments that were statewide. And they're no longer, they no longer exist, which is sad because. We were on the cutting edge of the state with some of this work until it was sort of dismantled.
The one thing that struck me with denial of credit in terms of taking a course in a subject area lower. In a sequence, I guess, and I guess those sequences are pretty well defined, right? Because I remember like as a student, I took, I never asked to take physics, for instance, because. I was here for two years and physics was the senior year class, and where I went, physics was freshman year. So they just like, I just think over, so why don't you end up in that kind of situation where you have. Transferring, I guess when you transfer, maybe it's.
It might be different, but I think this is. If you're. If you took algebra, I'm thinking like you took Algebra One and Geometry Algebra Two. And then you wanna go backwards and take something that might be in the middle. Because it's, you've already gone ahead of that.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense where it's so linear. But I just wonder about situations where like, who's determining necessarily what the, what the, what the um sequence should be? I guess, I guess.
Can't go back and only English nine if you're a junior, like some of those, like some of those things I think are pretty well set. I think it'd be hard to find that situation.
I guess if you're using competencies, you wouldn't ever need to go back either, I mean, that's the. That's the thing I was gonna say is, what if somebody, you know, just failed to do the certain, whatever it was, what whatever basic thing it was in English nine and then. They wanted to learn that, but um. I think it seems like.
I K A is getting flushed, so that's nothing, because that's already been incorporated into I K. And the ones that are being rescinded, uh, single read?
I think so.
Well.
Well, we can't really, because we can't resend them until.
We would single them when you're.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, and I think for the, and maybe.
What if people have some concern?
About individual, I think that maybe the way we should do it. Maybe we can do it this way. Is um. As a package, right, so if we say.
Or just have all the rescinded ones together.
Move to approve I K A A and resend. X Y Z, right, as as a single motion, right?
To approve I K.
And resend these other ones, right? And I think if we do it that way, it doesn't matter first read, single read, in terms of the rescinding policies, because it'll just be like. It'll just be, because I K needs to go to, but what's the bit I'm gonna say?
If I only consider that, that means people won't have seen these policies until that moment, but. But they'll be able to see if it's in the other one.
Right, they'll get, they'll get the first reading of I K. And then they'll see the other ones are rescinding.
Oh, you're you're saying would, we would include those on the first.
Yeah, because I think, I think functionally in terms of like what's policy of the school board. It doesn't make sense to me to do those things independently, see if that has to happen at the same time. And so whether it's one reading or two readings for rescinding is not sort of like immaterial. So it's like you have a single motion for I K rescinding the other ones. Right, and then everyone like makes, you know, makes peace with that. Um, and we come back for a second reading, a second uh go at it, that the other rescinding is part of that second go. It's like, it's the same, it's the single motion with the board in terms of that.
So, but we're usually making the motion. Long as you're making the motion, what you're saying is we'll approve, I mean, sorry, we'll we'll send. All of it together as one batch. For each reading.
Way too many words for that.
Okay, so. They're gonna be bundled.
We're doing a bundle, like.
I I get that, so both I K and the rescinded are going for two, two readings. Okay, yeah, so well, how it will look on the agenda is the ones that are that are being rescinded will be a bunch. But the other will be, it'll be listed separate, it needs to be, because one's consideration for elimination. And then the others consideration for approval.
And I'll make the motion to do them both at the same time.
You know what, you know what I'll do, I'll, I'll try to list I K last. It'll, it may not be alphabetical, but I'll try to list I K last on the. First and second readings, so it's right on top of the elimination ones, does that make sense?
Yes.
It does, thank you. Okay, so that's. Quite a few of those.
I K. So we're supposed to tell people we're rescinding homework?
We're not, no, it's not being rescinded.
My children are thrilled, especially biology.
Come on, biology is fun.
I do feel a little bit like this is one. Not necessarily because of anything that's coming in the. The um sample, but because it's just coming up. That we may want to sort of invite more public input on. Interested in greater input and even teacher input, do you have a sense from? Your. Your people, from from anybody in the schools, um, darn else staff that. About.
About homework?
Yeah, whether there's any direction people are trying to move with it, or if it's too hard to. Like if we wanna just leave it very flexible.
I think flexibility is key, um, if I look at what's in the actual rule, which is three oh six oh four B twenty one A. All the rule says is, there should be a policy on homework, including how is, how it is accessed and assessed.
Well, actually, that is great. Um, because some of the concerns I have is is absolutely the access, I mean, from from just anecdotal. Information, I know there's a lot of variation in terms of access. And I think that it's really hard to do. Definitely hard for terms, but it's really hard for students because every teacher has a different way of doing it. Um, sometimes they're not even doing it, and sometimes they're, you know, doing it at. Six o'clock at night, when the kids already tried to do their homework, and so it's just, I think it's, I I think it does need a little bit of a. A new look. Um, just from what I hear from people. So that's why I'm interested in having sort of a bigger conversation about it, but I think we should certainly talk about what's here and then see where we can go from there. There's also. There's not, nothing in here about the makeup homework, I know that's another issue. For control in terms of like missing, getting, especially in excuse absence. Then there's like not necessarily a timeframe, like different teachers have different timeframes, some of which are much more reasonable than others.
And this could be something that um. Because there's, like it says in red in the, right at the top. Flexibility for the the board to think about. What you wanna put in here, because there's a big difference between policy. And the actual procedures that are going on in the classroom, where procedures that might work for. Say an art class might not work for, an English class might not work for. A C T E class. So thinking about what that is, I mean, yeah, it was sort of a. Small policy that we've got on the books currently, but the rule only says we have to have a policy on homework. Including how it is accessed and assessed. So a bigger conversation about this at a future meeting might be something that has to happen. And if that's not something we're, we wanna bring even to the board for first reading until we've had that, we don't need to.
What does the last sentence inside, in the last paragraph mean? I don't understand what it means. So.
I'm sorry, the last.
The, in the standard policy, it's the first sentence, it says, performance accessibility teachers are encouraged to use online L M S sys- system. Current portals were available to communicate homework assignments. Also, without limiting a teacher's own methods for assessment and grading of homework. Common objectives or elements for assessment might include accuracy. Okay, common objectives or elements for assessment might include, this is like such a, it's mushy sentence.
There are two philosophies with homework. You do the homework, you turn it in, I grade you. If homework is viewed as practice, it's practice. So have you turned it in on time, this this speaks to some of our portrait of a graduate. Indicators, turning it in on time, showing that you can keep your things organized, showing that you've at least attempted, i- is it. Did you at least try to solve every problem, that's better than getting every problem correct.
Could, this is hypothetical, could the board make a policy that was in line more with? Effort as opposed to accuracy? So we could say it's bored.
I know it'd still be flex for the teacher, but it's the. I do think it needs to reflect a particular philosophy, and I think that's what I don't like about our current one, is it's like.
I don't think it has a point to it. Yeah, I think it's like.
And I think you're right, there are very.
There are a lot of laws, different like how much time should they spend, why are you assigning homework, what's the difference between homework? And I'm working on a long term project. Is that homework if I choose to go home and work on the next two paragraphs in my paper? Or am I continuing my coursework? So, but if you look in the red section, it says that, you know, the school board may include more prescriptive or flexible language such as. Homework should not be assigned to students in grades K four, or in no event shall homework constitute more than fifteen percent of a student's grade in a quarter. So you could be as direct as some of that.
I think what I'd like to do. Is to go to the board and not provide a specific policy, but ask for input.
I think that's a great way to do it, because there's not much here. And I do, I mean, I do think that that some very clear. Parameters around homework like these things, not specific to these, but but like them, would at least create a little consistency across the just. And I think that's what we're lacking at the moment. So yes, I think I agree with that, and maybe in terms of public feedback. We just put it on the agenda and hope that we get. And encourage people to participate if they want to. Have, or get feedback?
Before that. Or you could put out at the board meeting that if there is feedback that they could. Complete a Google form or.
I know, that's what you're thinking of, like, what's the best?
Because otherwise you're gonna be getting like six thousand emails, and you don't want that by email, maybe if you have a Google form.
Would admin be okay with sending out the parents' fire with like refreshing feedback, or is that like a, not a great channel for that?
You could do that from from the board. Yeah, from the board, the board is replacing input on homework and.
I would like to do that. And, I mean, I'd like to get it to students too, because I think.
It goes to parents, but you could provide a link to a different form, like especially if you're trying to capture elementary. Feedback, you need to have. Designed, you know, I mean, yeah.
I definitely would like to. I think, I mean, I don't know if I know what they still have, but um.
It's gonna be a mixed.
I know, exactly, I do too, so I'd kind of like to take that. And I'm wondering if it makes sense, you know, I had said the same thing about dress code, that I sort of wanted to get perspective on the dress code. Do you think we should do both at the same time? Or is that dress code policies, we're not even anywhere near ready to discuss, I know we're not, but it would inform us when we get there. But maybe that's one where it's, that's hard to be specific, maybe we just wait and let people do public input on that one.
Yeah, let's maybe.
Well, okay, but I also don't wanna like, end with people like. A different question every, everyone. Okay, I think that's a good way to handle it, so we'll, we'll try and do this Google form probably before going to the. Or should we have the board conversation first? I just wonder if the board conversation would would raise certain themes that we could then ask about. Maybe not, I think it's the other way around, it's probably better, because then we can share that information. Maybe not, I think it's the other way around, it's probably better, because then we can share that information.
Yeah, I actually think that's okay.
Why don't we do this? Because I'm finalizing, like I have not pushed send yet. So the next meeting is September thirtieth. Why don't we plan, so right now I don't have any committee updates, I'll just add policy committee. And then you guys can speak about it then.
Okay.
So then it's it's not necessarily all in there is homework. It'll just say policy committee that you're gonna get to an update.
Okay.
And then you can speak to
Conversation about it. Then we'll send that to Google for me. And then we'll have a more which is publicized.
Well, and you know, you bringing it up, it's in a public meeting, so it starts the dialogue and then collectively you guys can decide where to go. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure that the public has the chance to come and speak to it if they want to, so they won't know that it's coming up. Right, so we'll make sure that happens the next meeting.
So whatever is decided at the September thirtieth, then that will determine what we're doing at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Good?
We get just done because we need to update the twenty credits, but what they've done now with the three oh six rules is they've added um additional forms of how you can get the twenty credits in here. And they've added IKFA in section B. The early graduation piece they stuck in here. Instead of being a standalone policy, they've folded it in here.
You're to find the good in one. And there's this option of having different titles.
I have a question. So IKFA which is
Early graduation.
The one that we're rescinding. It's actually not being rescinded because of IKAA. It's being rescinded because of IKF, is that accurate?
IKFA is getting folded into IKF.
IKF, okay. So our previous
But there will be more, ILBA is also part of the I my god.
Okay, so we're No, we're gonna say IKF. No, sorry, IKFA.
And IKF are paired.
Are paired, yes.
So IKFA is not gonna fall under
No, but ILBAA is part of IK.
Well, are you with us though in terms of
Let's see.
IKF and IKFA, IKFA rescind being together in the in the in the agenda.
Yes, but not under IK.
Right.
IKF is its own item with IKFA. IK is bundled with IKAA and ILBAA, my gosh.
It's all gonna have to be orchestrated if there's
Because it's separate pieces.
Yeah, because it's it's if we're doing, I mean, I could in a sense list I suppose I could do it twice, I could do the elimination and then we organize which ones, but then it's it's gonna look really
No, I think the way you're gonna organize the agenda, I understand what you're saying. I can orchestrate the
Hopefully you have your motions straight, I think we're good. Okay, so IKF. We've now added a couple of different ways to get to the twenty credits. With our high school diplomas being, you could gain them in different ways. Which the the school board would determine what we wanna call them.
I feel like that might be a um larger conversation kind of thing of my own. Personally, I don't love the idea of giving different meetings, I feel like it sort of lifts away from making a good goal. Like open to hearing what other people think about that. We already have like honors.
With with distinction. Well, that's what it says here.
I know, I'm just wondering about your perspective on it.
So, oh, I see. So this would be three, three different Get your diploma, your diploma with distinction, and your minimum standards diploma. Right, I would be in favor of a diploma and a diploma with distinction.
And that's over a certain GPA. Or or number of credits.
Yeah, I think if people avail themselves. I think it's warranted.
So my feeling is that we already have like honors, right, like New Hampshire scholars. They're sort of have a distinction considering that.
Do you have your scholars and honors, it's the same thing?
No, but New Hampshire scholars is another sort of distinguished diploma.
That you can apply for.
By completing a certain number of
That's from the state though, not from
Well, if we did the distinction how would he could find that, you would have to choose what what those parameters were. Now, is this suggesting that all diplomas is just the which requires twenty credits?
That's the minimum.
Yeah, and the academic diploma is twenty five, question mark? Yeah, I mean, yeah.
For ours. Our is only include forty, I thought we had, this is a
We had two listed, minimums, but way back we did, back in the other
So when we just updated it, we got rid of those, I thought we had them both listed for some reason.
We took that one out because right at at this writing back in the beginning of the year. We needed the twenty to be there. That that was you, you could technically graduate high school with twenty. Our our um guidance folks and teachers are recommending strongly recommending you continue to take more classes. So, but that's not listed as the minimum, so when the three oh sixes were updated, they talked more about multiple options. And they also, because of early graduation, folded that now into this policy.
No, no, I might be on team stratified diplomas.
Well, I think it's a, I I mean, I know people have concerns about even the twenty credits or requirement, but so I kind of just again a bigger discussion, but we can um we can bring it for the first reading and have that discussion.
What is the um Interesting. At three oh six two three, it said the minimum standard credits for a regular diploma is twenty. Which doesn't seem to be in keeping with this policy, which is when he gets you a minimum standard diploma. That doesn't really square with the rule. Much to me, maybe I'm mistaken. So in in a special note in the sample policy so it says the minimum over credit price goal for a regular diploma is twenty. However, in the actual sample policy, it says itself, it says New Hampshire's minimum standard diploma is to award any student who has a minimum of twenty credits.
Because that's a holdover from prior to the finalization of the sixes.
Okay.
The three oh sixes do say regular high school diploma encompassed in at least twenty credits. The school board shall award a regular high school diploma to all students with and without disabilities to have achieved and demonstrated their local high school's competencies aligned to graduation requirements. And then it says the twenty credits required shall be distributed as specified in table three oh six one, which is essentially the table we've got. Attainment of twenty credits required for graduation that are based on the state academic standards shall ensure that students meet the graduation requirements outline outline below.
Okay, so the friction essentially is that our current standards of Portsmouth hundred and twenty six, right? And what this is saying is saying the 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 three oh six is now say a regular diploma.
Regular twenty.
Well, ours, no, we already, we all we already went to twenty.
We moved to twenty, but we are not saying that once you hit twenty, you're all done to every student. We are continuing to encourage them to do as much that they as they want to do for as long as they're enrolled. So if they hit twenty six, if they hit twenty eight.
I guess friend confused this like oh, so the yellow stuff in the sample policy is the holdover.
Yellow stuff is stuff that can change.
Stuff we can change. Okay, so the the school board association is saying have these three stats strata.
They're saying you could.
You could, and it says you could say a minimum standards diploma.
You could, yeah.
What I'm saying is that doesn't seem to jive with three oh six. Because this has regular diploma, so it seems pretty explicitly in contrary to it.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Yeah, because the whole discussion when we were moving to the twenty credit was that it wasn't supposed to be considered like a special diploma or a special case, right?
These rules can affect.
So I don't think we should have, I don't think we should call it minimum standard diploma, because it doesn't seem like that's what three oh six wants us to do. So I disagree with the national board.
Yeah, it's a regular diploma.
I think we might just call it that.
That everyone is getting a rich diploma, or you're still thinking maybe a regular diploma plus?
Well, I could see, I could see if you wanted to go team strata, what you would do is you would say twenty is a regular diploma. And then twenty five gets you a Portsmouth you know, some moniker, that's like the Portsmouth standard of education. And then you could go down that.
Or do you call them all a Portsmouth diploma with the understanding that twenty credits means graduation, twenty two credits means graduation, twenty six credits means graduation. What what the state is saying is that's where we work, what the state is saying is you have to get twenty to get graduated. Well, we could, what we were saying was, yes, you have to hit twenty, but you could also be twenty two, you can also be twenty seven.
No, I understand, I think um
No, we were not sort of defining that because the other option is the single diploma option. And the school board may establish a minimum credit requirement greater than the twenty credit minimum.
It may.
But it can't, but it has to still have the minimum. So that's sort of, that's what that's what this is demonstrating, is that we have an option to create an extra one.
Yeah, but it's got two extra ones.
Or two extra ones, or more instead too, so I think, um, I mean I think of this in terms of like different kids needing different things, or because of the way they learn, or for all different reasons, you know, they have to work more during the school year than other kids or whatever, I think I don't like the idea of separating them, I like the idea of us supporting each kid in getting to that diploma.
I think my
But I also can see sort of like if you're a student who doesn't have many challenges and you're doing really well, then what makes you work harder beyond those twenty credits?
Well, I guess, yeah, my biggest concern there is like its implication for college process or like stuff that comes after, right? Does it matter to the admissions process? The version of the diploma that comes out of Portsmouth.
All they're gonna look at is the transcript, they're gonna look at the transcript and see what you took, what's your GPA and the the um high school's gonna be putting out information about starting with this year's ninth grade, about the changes in class rank and GPA and moving toward a cum laude, summa cum laude moniker instead of valedictorian, salutatorian kind of process. So that that would line up with, you get your twenty, but on your transcript, you you could, I mean, you hit twenty, you're out the door, but you can continue to take, you can continue to work your GPA up. Because those are the things for the students who really are pursuing those opportunities will be doing that. But knowing that the students who trying to get them over the line.
In that case, the moniker on our diploma has no meaning. Really what matters is diploma and then transcript.
Transcript, right, this the diploma titles, it's it does get into kind of like the separation and it feels weird. Um you do have students who will get like the New Hampshire scholars designation, it's not a diploma like
My only concern is making sure we're not disincentivizing, not being disincentivizing, but like
Encouraging more to do the twenty and out the door.
Well, I don't wanna hamstring kids you know, if they're achieving um more in this arena.
I do think your point, Patty, is a good one about if kids are looking to go to college and you know they need whatever
Maybe they have X amount of classes in four languages, they're going to be doing that. There was a lot of work with the three oh sixes to remove requirements from schools. Because I think that the thinking was eventually to start removing financial support. Where you don't have to have that many credits, you don't have to have that many classes. We don't have to support what you're putting into your high school, you only need to do X Y Z. But that doesn't mean that that's what everybody is going to do, I think that there was, there is an intent or there was an intent with this that well, you can go learn somewhere else, you can go learn about
Yeah, yeah, by setting the 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 state saying it had, it can be twenty and and you can't go more than that to get a diploma. It undermines any districts trying to set a higher standard.
It doesn't say you can't, it doesn't say you can't go more than
No, but you still have to we can't say graduate, to get a diploma from Portsmouth High School, only twenty five credits, we can't say that, right? And so that being the case, it undermines any attempt to do so. So and and
Well, I think it makes it more challenging for the districts that want to hold a higher standard. And puts the onus on the taxpayers in that district to then pay for, oh you want to produce this quality student who are going to these colleges? You need to pay for it yourself, the state's not doing it. And I think that that's the way they were thinking when they revamped these requirements. Which is not, I mean, yes, the ELOs provide different ways to learn competencies, yes, are definitely the way to go, because why do you wanna sit down and relearn fractions five times if you already know them?
So from that perspective, you could argue that the twenty five, the twenty six would be a like a point of view of Portsmouth School Board and the district that we do think that there's value in a higher standard for graduation.
Well, maybe that gets written in somewhere to our policy, because I I agree, I think that's important. And then we're twelve thirty one, yeah, now they are, um, okay. Now they are, um, okay. Well. Do we wanna bring this one to the board? Cause I think it is worth having this broader conversation with the board. Um, IKF, I say FA, it looks like we're still a little bit on. Okay.
I can get some more information of my high school.
The typical attendance too.
Like I can get such something written from, um, Dan, if he can write something up about that.
Okay, cause I'm curious why we're not looking at competencies for that. They get it different way. As opposed to C time, which is effectively what's asked to determine attendance. So it's very impressive to me.
Yeah, I'll definitely, people, just that new.
Okay, so we, should we bring this to board or should we bring it onto it for?
Do you wanna wait until next time?
Yeah, maybe if you're gonna have more.
We can wait till next.
You know what? Maybe we can just briefly do the same thing with, that we're gonna do with.
The homework?
Homework and just mention, this is an option we're given. What are people's general thoughts on it?
So then we'll bring it back to them.
Okay.
That makes sense. And that's for IKF. IKF, IKFA, yeah, and that's where we stopped.
Okay, well, we've done pretty well.
Yes, we did.
Thank you, Patty, for bringing us through all that.
Are we good? Keeping track of all this?
Yeah, I think we'll grab you. These are, well, we have our date.
Okay.